I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Ms. Karstafen.
Here.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Brubaker. And Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Okay, would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the November 6, 2019 Leary School Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my far right is Board Member Jim Bax. Board Member Kevin Brubaker is not able to attend today. I'm Greg Elick. To my left is our Board Member and Vice President Annie Karstafen. To her left is our Senior Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slush. And to her left is our Treasurer Joy Klickinger. And... Award-winning, yes. And we start right off with our Treasurer. And we have very exciting information today as we go over the five-year forecast. So Madam Treasurer, it's all yours.
Well, thank you, President Elick. Is everybody excited to hear about the five-year forecast?
Oh, yeah.
Huh? She brought props. I brought props.
Nice.
Okay. But, okay, I hope so, Ben. Now that I have your attention, I'd like to start with just the basics. If, in your packets, if you would get out the five-year forecast... The basic things to remember is it is a tool just to look at our resources and our expenditures for the future, and it's used to plan for the future of our kids. I mean, what can we do? What should we invest in? What things should we disinvest in? And you've heard it before, but it is all about the kids and our mission, which is ensuring that each child reaches his or her full potential. And having said that, even though this is a five-year forecast with just our numbers, it really is to facilitate what our mission is. Secondly, the five-year forecast is required by the Ohio Department of Education and the Auditor's Office, mostly for them to identify school districts that have potential financial problems. And what does the five-year forecast cover? It's general fund only. We do have other funds, but the money that comes in for those funds are typically dictated how we can spend them. For instance, the building fund, we can only use the monies that come in for that to build the buildings. All right, I gave you a lot of backup information. Don't worry, we're not going to go through it number by number. Each five-year forecast merely expands on the one that you received previously. In this case, we started with the five-year forecast that you received in May, and we've updated from there. The five-year forecast is based on history, trends, and assumptions. The law requires that the forecast be presented to the Board in November and May. If you recall, that used to be October and May. But they decided to wait till the elections were over so that people could put that information in their five-year forecast. Even though the forecast isn't brought to the Board, except for those two times, I do update it on a monthly basis just to make sure that there's nothing unexpected happening. And you do see the results of that in May. The first forecast a year is the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year '20. Our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. As you know, the closer the future gets, the easier it is to forecast. So fiscal year '20 is probably the most accurate of all the years on the forecast, just because we know closer what's going to happen. My agenda for this evening is simple. We'll start with an overall summary. We'll look a little closer at the revenue assumptions and trends, and then do the same for the expenditures. And then lastly, I'll try and put it all together for you. So if you'd follow along in your five-year packet, if you'd go to page three, it's just an executive summary. You'll be hearing me use the words "if" and "assumption" quite often. On page three, you can see the beginning balance that's assumed for each year. It's a positive balance through the start of fiscal year '23. The next line is the revenue, and you can see that it stays relatively steady. The following line is expenditures. And when expenditures are greater than the revenue, that eats away at the beginning balance, otherwise known as deficit spending. If you would turn to page four, it's the revenue overview. The renewal levy that we had on the ballot last year, of course, did pass. That was certainly necessary to keep our local tax revenue stable. TPP is being phased out of line 1.05. In prior fiscal year forecasts, this was offset by the assumption of increased state funding. The new biennial budget did not give us an increase in state funding. As a matter of fact, it took money away from our general fund and put it into a fund, like I was talking about earlier, like the building fund says, here's money, but you have to build with it. They took money from our general fund dollars and put it in a fund that says, here's the only way you can spend that. And it's for wellness and...
Student wellness.
Student wellness.
Yeah.
So our state foundation dollars are frozen for this year and next. After that, it's anybody's guess. And our assumption that is in this five-year forecast is that we will get a 1% increase for the years '22 through '24. Is that too much? Is it too little? I don't know. But that's why we have an assumption noted. The previous five years, the revenues grew at an average rate of a little over 1%. This forecast shows a decrease in revenues each year. If you turn to page five, there's more detail of our real estate revenue. General property tax makes up over 35% of our total revenue. We're expecting a half percent increase over the life of the forecast, and we are modeling the renewal of any current tax levies that come due. If you'll flip to page eight, it's a look at the state funding. Our state funding makes up for over 47% of our revenues. That's why when it became frozen, it made such a difference to our five-year forecast. It's our largest source of revenue and arguably our most unpredictable source. Our funding has been very much dependent on student count and property valuations in the past. The new biennial budget doesn't really care. They've frozen us at last year's revenues, at last year's base aid. And that's for this year and next year. In our last forecast, with enrollment up over our predictions, we anticipated increased state funding. The current state budget does not increase our funding if we have more students. So more students can come in, and we'll have more students to take care of, but we will not receive additional state aid for that. Who would have predicted that? We did not in our last five-year forecast. If you'll turn to page 10, it's the property tax allocation. And even though this line is a small portion of our overall total revenue, I wanted to just draw your attention to it because this is where the tangible personal property tax has been phasing out. And over the last four years, the decrease in TPP has been from $1.5 million down to zero. We no longer receive the fixed-rate reimbursement for TPP. On page 11, it shows all the other revenues. The largest category in this line item is tuition that we receive from open enrollment and students placed in our district that have other districts that are responsible for their education. We also get Medicaid reimbursement, and workers' comp reimbursement are recorded in this line. Overall, it's a very small percentage of our total revenue. On page 13, we start with the expenditure overview. Overall expenditures, and this is overall everything, expenditures are shown with an average increase of 3.85%. We're self-insured on our medical plans, which has helped us keep our benefit costs down. We have put in a 12% increase over the five years. And of course, the retirement benefits that are in there increase with salary. On page 14, our salary cost. Salaries account for 48% of our revenues. I'm sorry, 48% of our expenditures. Our current labor contract calls for a 2% increase this year. I've continued the 2% increase for the life of the five-year forecast to reserve money for potential staff and salary increases. You'll see in fiscal year '22, there's a slower growth rate, and that's due to the reduced staffing that we are anticipating with the opening of the new buildings. On page 15, it's the benefit cost, and that's almost 19% of our spending. The projection for increase in insurance, once again, in that line item is 12% per year for the rest of the forecast. On page 16 is purchased services. It's the second-largest component of the district's budget. So what does that include? That's the line item where tuition is paid to other districts and community schools. Expenses are expected or projected to grow about 2.3% this year, with a bigger jump next year due to higher special ed costs, which are also in there. We're anticipating a reduction in natural gas costs and maintenance costs with the opening of the new buildings. However, offsetting some of that savings will be the electric cost increasing due to all buildings being air-conditioned. Page 17 is supplies. Again, this is a very small part of our overall budget. Some of the increases in there, this includes textbook adoptions and purchasing and keeping up to date with our Chromebooks. Page 18, capital outlay. With the district building all new buildings, we'll keep the building repair to what is necessary. When it used to be, we used to have preventative and those kind of expenses in there. We've cut way back on that. Once the buildings are built, the spending will go toward equipping the new buildings. On page 19, this is debt payments that were made on energy conservation bonds. And you can see that that's being reduced because we're paying them off. Under other objects on page 20, the main component here is the cost for the county auditor and the treasurer to collect our taxes. It's for their fees, which run about $650,000 a year. Other financing uses on page 21 are advances and transfers to other funds. Okay, now if you take your packet, turn to page 22, and look at what is the required forecast format. You can see the last number in the far-right-hand column is negative. In the last forecast, it was positive. But the last forecast ended with fiscal year '23 also. So this forecast has one more year of deficit spending on it, and it also has the revised assumptions, which were negative compared to what I had in there. So what I'd like you to keep in mind is it's not unusual for the five-year forecast to fluctuate because we're not in control of our revenues. And a lot of our expenditures are pretty much fixed at this point. There's a lot of expenditures that we have no control over also. So like outgoing tuition and those type things, special ed needs. The five-year forecast is based on assumptions that can change due to legislation, to new leadership in Columbus, and just changing circumstances in general. And when we're deficit spending, each time we forecast out another year, it's going to look increasingly worse. There's no one thing that got us here, but there are several pretty large things, including the state funding, that have helped. We're fortunate to have had cash reserves. The forecast assumes that they will be depleted before the end of fiscal year '23. I have not anticipated putting any general fund dollars into the building project. And I have not anticipated any repair or maintenance for any of the buildings that we are going to keep or keep up and running. So those are some important assumptions that I just wanted to make sure you took note of. The purpose of the five-year forecast is to be proactive. We don't want to just sit back and hope the state will provide because clearly that doesn't always happen. The last time we asked for additional operating millage was May 4, 2010. That was, that's awesome. However, the normal cycle across the state is to go to voters approximately every three years, and we haven't been there since 2010. And the promise we made to our voters at that time was to make the last new money last until fiscal year '19. And we have lived up to and passed that promise. Again, this forecast is based on assumptions. It's here to help us plan. Several years ago, buildings were closed and millions of dollars were cut out of the budget. And that's why we have had, we've been able to weather whatever the state gave or took from us. Will we need new money? Yes. Our revenues are not keeping up with the general inflation of expenditures. The next question is when? I wish we could count on an increase from the state, but we can't. I'd like to put off asking for new money, of course, as long as we possibly can. However, I don't want to delay the question and dig a big hole for us to have to get back out of. Making us look at the future is exactly what the forecast is meant to do. From here, decisions can be made based on data, based on our assumptions, based on what we know. Other than that, the last thing that I want to say, and possibly the most important, is that we are committed to being responsible stewards of all funds that pass through our district. With this explanation, I will be asking the Board later in the agenda to approve the forecast as presented. And when approved, it will be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. Also, I'll entertain any questions you might have, now or later, up to you.
Do we have any renewal levies coming? When?
Well, the one that we passed was a five-year levy. So that one is due...
'23.
In '23. And then the large emergency levy is in '24.
So we've got two renewals coming up, just as we're going to need more money. So, starting in 2020, we're projecting deficit spending every year.
Correct.
In the year ending '19, the final numbers, did we have deficit spending?
No.
In the year ending '18, did we have deficit spending? Seventeen?
No.
When is the last time this organization had deficit spending?
I really don't know that.
Do you know? So it's been a long time?
Yeah.
Okay. And it seems like we have a very comfort level with our revenue stream. Is that accurate?
No, not really. That, you know, we have 47% that comes from the state. And at this point, there's a lot of movement on a new funding formula. We're currently frozen. I don't anticipate that that'll last. It generally doesn't. But how we'll come out of that, I don't know.
Okay.
We expected, if I could add, 3% growth in this, which on an $80 million budget is quite a sum. Yeah. Which was frozen for two years, so...
Okay. On the sheet we got in our Board notes, they said the attendance was still going down. It's not, is it? I mean, it keeps going down every year, according to that chart.
It does, but that's an increase over what was projected.
Oh, okay.
They projected us to be at about $57.50 this year, somewhere around there.
Somewhere around there.
And we're not, we did not lose the projected amount, is the better way for us to think about it. It's not necessarily that we're growing with students, we're just not losing it the rate they said we would lose.
Okay. Okay.
2018 was a six-annual, a six-annual renewal. And am I understanding you to say that for the 2019 tax year, any increases that we would receive has been capped? Is that what you said, or no?
No, no, no.
Okay. Because I was like, what happens in three years when it's the cleanup?
Yeah, no, there's...
Do we get increases then, or no?
There's no, there's no cap to our real estate, except for what is, you know, like governed by House Bill 920.
Okay.
The only cap we have right now is the state aid.
The state aid on students, okay.
Joy, generally excluding benefits, general inflation factor, were we on the order of one, one and a half, somewhere in there?
Excluding salaries and benefits?
Yeah.
How we could, that's the little bit we have to play with. Because we can, you know, we can make Chromebooks last longer if we have to. We can make a textbook adoption, keep going. But yeah, typically, that stays around the 1% range, 1.1%.
And then, but we build in, we build in over the five years, we build in 12? 12%?
12.
12% on insurance?
Yes. Which, I mean, there's a stab in the dark also because we're self-funded. In fiscal year '19, we had a 0% increase. The year before that, we had a 23% increase.
So you're...
And this year, we have 12.
Your strategy is basically the same as it has been in terms of, you tend to be conservative on revenue, and you tend to project heavier, like in benefits. That's almost, that to me, 12% per year over five years is a lot, which would be, which would be probably as negative as you could get. I mean, as far as a negative, if you wanted to do a, you know, kind of a, I'll just call it a very conservative expense forecast, that would, that would tend to do that.
Yes and no. I mean, the medical, the one year, we had a 23% increase. I mean, that's, and I'm only forecasting 12 out of five years, which I don't have any clue. I think, from my conservative point of view, it's reasonable.
Reasonable, okay. Now, and that, and then because we are self-insured, then the employees, all of us in this district have some, will have control over that to some degree.
To some degree.
Based on our experience.
Yeah. So the difference between being self-insured and not is self-insured says, you know, there's going to be years where we're going to have really good years and build up our reserves. However, there's also going to be some years where we're going to have not-so-good years or not-so-good of usage. And we've got caps, we've got other insurances to cover that, but then it eats away at your reserves a little bit more. So it's, but we have a better chance of less fluctuation when we're in control of that.
What is the, is there like a hard-line cap that we're at for the self-insurance? What...
The state dictates that. We have to file a form. They look at our experience, and they tell us how much we have to have set aside for runoff claims. And then our consultant basically does the same thing, except the number they give us is what we should set aside for fluctuations in usage. So we have both of those basically set aside.
But is there a dollar limit? If somebody being self-insured, that if an individual becomes sick, it's capped at like $25,000 or something like that?
I wish it was $25,000.
$250,000.
No, it's $250,000.
$250,000?
Yeah. And we buy stop-loss insurance that at 250, the stop-loss insurance covers the claims.
All right. Any other questions?
Are you sure this is right? It can't be 2020.
Can't be 2020.
It can't be 2020 already.
Oh.
It just can't be.
I wouldn't mind going back to our '18 and '19 numbers.
One other question here. As far as the new buildings, can you just say that again? What's the impact of the new facilities on this? Just the maintenance? Is that the only item that you kind of changed for the new facilities?
Well, no, we...
With the lack of...
We decreased some staffing.
In 2022, yeah.
In 2022. Hang on a second. So the first three buildings are expected to open in August of 2020, which is fiscal year '21. And there's not going to be much savings at that point, just because of the, we're basically moving from one building to another. But probably, and we'll probably use the same staffing at that point. And I say that probably incorrectly. I have anticipated, or I assume that, that we'll use the same staffing.
It's hard to make cuts in the middle of the phase-in, phase-out in certain situations. So we're thinking the whole picture will become visible, for lack of a better word, when both phases are done and we can see. Because they're, we're taking with the changing of the boundaries and everything, kids from several places, and you can't leave buildings unsupervised on, you know, teachers. They may have some smaller classes. We're moving them around. So we think the bigger impact will be once phase one and phase two are done with that to get the most impact in what we're looking at.
Makes sense.
Cutting of administrators and other staff.
I like to use the term savings versus cutting.
Yes, yes, savings.
All right. Any other questions, or...
Ken, we still have money put away for the high school, right, for any repairs?
There is a, OFCC requires that you pass a half a mil for maintenance. So we passed that with the high school, when they passed that issue. But the half a mil covers all of our schools.
Oh.
And a half a mil generates about $400,000 a year. So that's not a whole lot.
Wasn't there some money built in, though, for just the high school?
That was it.
Oh, that's it?
That was it. Now, as these new buildings come online, then it has to cover them too.
They don't give you another half mil.
No.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. All right, Joy, thank you. That's an outstanding job. Again, I think at the end of the day, we have to remember that this is a forecast. And we'll have plenty of time to dig into the actual revenues and expenses and, you know, adjust these numbers as we go forward. And we'll really rely on the Superintendent and the entire Cabinet to help us on these as we move forward. A lot of exciting things going on here in the district. And we do have to remember, at the end of the day, we do have to have money to operate, so...
So great job on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. I believe we do not have any visitors here today. Is that correct, Madam Treasurer?
That's correct.
So there will be no visitor coming up here. Next on the agenda is the board member discussion items. Are there any items here that the board would like to discuss? With none?
Got a brief building update.
Okay, fire away.
Very brief.
Okay.
The, you recall
Okay, sorry.
You recall last month, we talked about, we talked about that the district is engaging with the township, the city in their joint economic development, as a joint economic development district, and which is going to, the plan is to install a new sewer line from, for the entire, from Lake Avenue into this area, which would replace the old sewer line that we currently have. But it's, it is going to offer, it's going to offer many more development opportunities as the changes occur in this particular site. So that is ongoing. There are things in process there, but hasn't been, we'll see some paperwork and some resolutions on that hopefully in the next month or so.
Okay.
Westwood is currently in the design development phase, so it's moving forward. You'll recall, we spoke about utility pool relocations. I believe we're getting, we've got
Is that just at the Northwood campus?
That is just strictly right, at the Northwood campus, and we've got paperwork moving through between the district and Windstream, coming to agreements on that. That will come to us in the form of an agreement which should allow that to occur.
They already placed the three poles
Oh, they did?
That are replacing, yeah.
Good.
Cool. So they're moving.
They're moving.[1032.85][1032.85](laughter)
Do we have a, I don't remember the letters and the acronyms for Westwood, but is it the final phase, GMP or whatever? Do we have a timetable on that now to finalize the Westwood project?
I have not, I don't recall what it is.
I would say it's like January and February.
January, February? Okay.
And I see that the contractor has authorized overtime at the Hamilton site
Okay.
in order to make sure that they get the roof in place so that they can work this winter. So.
I believe for your last report, Hamilton was slightly lagging. That was the only one as far as
It was back, they estimated about two weeks.
Okay.
So the intent of the overtime is to catch that up and get the building under roof because it's key that they do the interior work between now and sometime later in the winter.
So we're on time with our first three projects? Or close?
I would say yes, and I'd say we're close to being caught up. We'll get, we'll be close to being caught up on Hamilton probably by the first of December. We should be even.
That's great.
We should be good there.
Super. Great. Thank you. Okay, other items for the good of the cause, the sheriff? All right, moving along business-wise. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from the October 16, 2019 meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen and a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, are you back up? Treasurer action items?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. My first item is for donations to express appreciation and acknowledge the donations as listed in the agenda. Number two is to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures. Number three is to approve the five-year forecast with assumptions as was presented, and those are my items for this evening.
Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer action items?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstoffen. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Any other reports this evening, Madam Treasurer?
I just wanted to mention that all your information for Capitol Conference is at each one of your seats, and just remember to make sure you take your tag with you.
Okay. Bring the tags. Okay, super. All right, moving along on the agenda. Superintendent, Madam Superintendent, action items for us this evening?
Yes, I have several. First of all, to approve the payment of the following stipends as listed below for, and of course tutoring we do every year. To approve the payment of the stipends as listed below for the professional development training. For approval of the overnight field trip to, for the robotics students to Michigan, and for approval of an overnight athletic field trip out of state for detail below. We're trying to be a little bit more proactive, as you can see, to list all of them for all the possible dates so that you see that in the format where we put basketball, wrestling, and softball, so you're not getting them every single board meeting. Then to approve the placement of the agreement of the achievement centers for children with a student start date of 11-4, and that concludes my action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent action items?
So moved.
Approve.
Second.
And a motion by Board Member Bax and a second by Board Member Karstoffen. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Madam Superintendent, personnel action items?
Yes, and I believe we might have a couple introductions at the end.
Okay.
First of all, to approve the job description we updated for the student engagement liaison slash social worker. That's Mr. West's position at the high school. Also, to approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following certified staff. To approve the appointment of the following certified staff. We have some new substitute teachers, which is awesome. To approve the following game workers for the athletic services. We have tournaments coming up, as you know, so this is to approve the following tournament game workers. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts for winter, winter sports basically. To approve the following student as a PAC team member. To approve the disability retirement of the following classified staff. To approve the resignation of the following classified administrative staff. And to approve the resignation of the following classified staff members. And then we have the appointment of Mr. Kokai in the administrative staff. Due to the earlier resignation, we moved his date, Mr. Carmaney, as you can see earlier. Also, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members. We have the approval of the one-year limited contracts for the following classified staff. And then the appointment of the security officer, Jake Weber, from the police department. And then the unpaid leave of absence of a classified staff. And that concludes my personnel items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action items as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Karstoffen. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Jake Weber, I thought he was the SRO at Eastern Heights.
He is. He was approved incorrectly the first time title, so they had to change his. We're calling them security, pardon me, security officers due to some new legislative requirements.
So he's still at Heights?
He's still at Heights and heading that up, yes.
All right.
It's just semantics.[1475.23][1475.23](laughter)
Okay.
Any other questions? I was just curious. I see that we do have some middle school coaches being hired. How is that, are we doing a little better on that, or is that still an ongoing issue here?
Still an ongoing issue. We're reaching out to teachers, hoping that they'll take part in that. It's always a struggle, but I think we're getting there. Jamie Barneyer would be able to speak to that. Are we full now? Do we have all of the coaches we need?
We're working with Heather Backen. We seem to be finding the coaches, and it seems to be working that we're getting more people interested as we're trying to talk to people, but we have had a struggle trying to find the middle school. But we're continuing to work with Heather Backen.
Okay.
Is our, what do we call the sports liaisons? What's the term?
Faculty managers.
Are they helping with this?
Yes, yes, they're reaching out.
Good.
And that seems to be helping, teacher to teacher.
Good. Perfect. Okay. Any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Superintendent report, Madam Superintendent.
Just one quick one. We had our second PD day of the year yesterday and had a lot of training going on. It was very successful. Kudos to academic services and pupil services for all the work they put into planning that.
Oh, I'm sorry, did we have new?
Oh, yes, we did.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead, Jamie.
This is my favorite part. I don't want to miss this, so sorry about that.
We get into our routine.
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to introduce the following classified staff members. Ashley Schwartz, she's going from substitute personal attendant to special education peer professional at Prospect.
Welcome, Ashley.
Charles goes as Chaz. He'd like to be called Chaz. So Chaz Brown, he is actually going to be our general maintenance at Administration Building.
Great, welcome, Chaz.
Thank you.
And Nicholas Jones, he's going from substitute building operations to utility over at Crestwood.
Great, welcome.
So welcome to the Pioneer family.
Great, welcome, everybody.[1626.13][1626.13](applause)
Yeah, I would, do you mind if I say a few words to Brian's new position? He helped us when we first announced that Mr. Carmaney was leaving and he moved up his date. So Brian's been already boots on the ground, so to speak. I have to say boots on the ground for that. But he has been a great help already, making a big difference in the departments, looking at ways that we can save, restructure, and I think all of us are in agreement that he's already done a fabulous job
Oh, good.
in the short period of time. So kudos to Brian Kokai, and welcome to the new position.
I see you brought your sister with you, too.[1673.13][1673.13](applause) All right, that's exciting. Any other items, Madam Superintendent?
Nope. PD day, again, just a great day we had over at the high school. Many, many, many opportunities for our teachers, so thank you all for who were involved in that.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for the update. Moving along on the agenda, Board of Education. As you can see, we have some updates here from our policies and regulations, and I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the first reading of the updates for the board's policy and regulations as listed.
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Board Member Bax. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, any other items today from this governing body? With none. We have one last item is we will be going into executive session, so I would like to request an executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official with possible action to follow as authorized under Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. And thanks, everybody, for coming.[1791.92][1791.92](end of transcript)